I would like to call for the 27th Board of Education, District Number 27, Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, June 26, 2012. We held an executive session at 5:00 PM. No action was taken. May I have a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Mr. Penderski. Absent. Mrs. Rose. Absent. Mr. Schuler.
Here.
And Mrs. Wold.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. That brings us to our President's Report. I'd like to welcome the members of the audience. And as I think everyone here knows, tonight is Dr. Griffith's final school board meeting in Lake Forest. So Jim Carey is here from the District 115 School Board. And we have a resolution to read. Whereas during Dr. Griffith's tenure at Lake Forest Elementary School District 67, the school day was lengthened to increase instructional time. And an extended-day kindergarten was established. Algebra for All was developed and instituted, bringing more than 90 percent of all eighth grade students to algebra mastery. And in 2000, District 67 schools completed over $25 million in renovations and upgrades without a referendum by using non-traditional funding sources such as grants, donations, and other cost-saving measures. And...
Whereas in 2004, Dr. Griffith's responsibilities were expanded through an innovative shared services model and became the Superintendent of Lake Forest School District 115 and District 67, providing our community with a top-quality articulated K-12 educational system while significantly reducing redundant administrative expenditures. And...
Whereas in 2006, the community endorsed a $54 million referendum for District 115 by a two-to-one margin, the largest school referendum in the history of the community. This broad support kept Lake Forest High School academically competitive by providing enhanced and additional science labs, classrooms, updated technology, expanded research and study areas, and improved school safety and security. And...
Whereas Dr. Griffith recommended that Lake Forest High School West Campus be resurrected and reinvigorated, and it now includes a shared services administrative center, teacher training facility, Little Scouts preschool, Citadel Theater, and a new varsity athletic field. Dr. Griffith helped negotiate the Special Education District of Lake County lease of a portion of the LFHS West Campus building for a K-8 program which will provide over $9 million in upgrades and revenues to the district over a 20-year period. And...
Whereas under Dr. Griffith's leadership, a comprehensive curriculum review cycle was established. Districts 67 and 115 test scores have repeatedly risen to record levels. Lake Forest High School has experienced record numbers of national merit scholars, and an emotional wellness initiative was implemented at both districts, addressing the needs of the whole child. And...
Whereas on the community front, Dr. Griffith has served as the past president of the Lake Forest Historical Society and the Croya Adult Board, served on the Elloa Commission, and on the boards of the Lake Forest Open Lands, Lake Forest Graduate School of Management, and is a member of the Rotary Club of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. And...
Whereas Harry Griffith has been a leader and mentor to countless staff, faculty, administrators, and his initiatives and Texas tales will be thought of often in the years to come.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Boards of Education of Lake Forest Elementary School District 67 and Lake Forest High School District 115 hereby express for themselves, as well as for the parents, students, staff, and faculty, and the citizens of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Noelwood, its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Dr. Harry Griffith for all he has done to advance the quality education in our communities. Adopted this 26th day of June, 2012.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Enthusiastically.
Second. Any comments? All in favor? Mr. Anderson?
I was just going to add one thing to the list of improvements to the community I think Dr. Griffith has made, and that's the football stadium just close by to here. And I think since that was put in, it's been a sort of wholesome and terrific, safe place for kids to go on Friday nights, and been a place for both 67 and 115 kids where they can go, and it's a just exciting place to be. So thanks for that and all you've done for the district.
I think before we vote, I would like to read a statement. Jeff Penderski could not be here, but he did give me a statement. And this is from Jeff Penderski. He says, "Thanks so much for your service to our children, teachers, and community. Your passion for challenge, change, innovation, and teamwork has served the district well, resulting in many visible accomplishments, and a number of other, much less visible accomplishments, which also strengthened the district academically, socially, and financially. Although any change in leadership is a risk, it also poses opportunities. You are leaving the district in tip-top condition in the capable hands of elite teachers, administrators, and support staffs that are capable of operating the district smoothly while the new superintendent gets to know the students, teachers, and community he serves. I wish you great success in the next phase of your life." All right. Shall I have ... We have the two motions on the floor, all in favor of adopting the resolution?
Aye.
I.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And then, Board members, in honor of Dr. Griffith, School Districts 67 and 115, we are naming this part of West Campus the Dr. Harry D. Griffith Administration Center. And I would like to ask Jim Carey to kind of give a history of this building and how it came to be in the state that it currently is, and why we were honoring him with this.
Well, it's interesting. About eight years ago, when I started to talk to the caucus about coming onto the Board, a predecessor Board had concluded that this campus was obsolete, certainly from the standpoint of the building, and that the most effective approach from a cost-management standpoint would be to knock it down. And the tenants that had been in the building, using it for a number of years, were basically moved out over time. And a very elegant-looking chain-link fence was put around the building. As a resident of the West Side, I had the chance to see that chain-link fence every two or three times a day, and it just struck me that how was it we were not putting this building to better use? During the course of the campaign for the $54 million, and so much of the work went over onto the East Campus, one of Harry's suggestions was that we take what was an asset of the district, an underutilized asset, and bring it back into use. And I still drive by here three or four times a day, and it's an utter joy to see the number of cars pulling in, sometimes against the light, but pulling in to drop off their children, whether it be for C-Doll, whether it be for after-school athletics, whether it be the little kids coming into Little Scouts. But to see a building that was once viewed as a white elephant that needed to be knocked down, now invigorated, and on Friday nights, Bill, you're spot on. I mean, this was very quiet on Friday nights, and now when you drive by five or six nights during the fall, it's just terrific to see all the cars parking everywhere they can to attend a football game. So I think we all owe Harry quite a debt of gratitude for taking, again, this underutilized asset and really resurrecting it, as the word was used in the document. It was a terrific piece of work, and we're all very appreciative of that. Thank you, Harry. And that's the picture?
That's the picture. That's part of the signage up there on the wall.
Don't we have another?
There's another.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. That way? Okay, so this will be the signage that will be out front and down by the staircase? And this will be the section out front?
That's behind where Maureen Quaid sits?
Where he sits.
Yep.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your assistance.
Have a good night.
You too. And that concludes the President's Report and brings us to the final Dr. Harry Griffith Superintendent's Report.
Jim, thank you. I know you need to go, but thank you so much. Well, wow, you know, I didn't expect this at all. In the beginning and in the end, it's really not about me. I've always known that it's about our team. And it starts with keeping in mind what's best for kids. Because in our rich body of opinion that occurs on any topic, it's sometimes easy to get distracted with and drifting away from what's really important about students. So I have to say, when I came to Lake Forest in 1994, in the middle of a deep crisis, testing scandal, I was the third superintendent in three years, and I was the seventh superintendent in 110 years. So it was a pretty emotional, unusual time period to come. But I was used to working on helping do turnarounds in school districts, and I honestly thought I'd be here about three, four years, and I'd go on to the next school district that needed help. And it just never occurred to me that this would become home. There was always a next challenge in front of us. I realized I was part of a community that was sincere about wanting the best it could have for its children, living within the resources we had. We never had a referendum in District 67. We've not had one at the high school, other than the capital raise that we did in 2006. I was blessed by working with a team that helped balance our budget for 17 consecutive years in District 67, 16 or 17. And of course, that's the work of a lot of people. It's not about me. It's about our Board members. It's about these administrators that are sitting here right now, and the ones that were in your chairs before you. Our parent community is the best. Of course, in every public institution, there's differences of opinion. But Lake Forest is so blessed by its parent community. We had 445 high school graduates this year go to 187 colleges and universities. We have amazing students. And to work on their behalf, this is what this really ... I just can't tell you how hard it is for me to even talk about this, but I know, deep down inside, it's a team effort. We've got a great team. We've got strong committees. They do a lot of the drilling down that you don't see at the board table because it's very time-consuming. We could go back to having five, six-hour meetings. We could all be leaving exhausted at midnight. But instead, we put in many more hours when our committees meet. And I feel like, I also feel that there's a great deal of respect among teachers, parents, Board members, and administration. And I'm very, very proud of that. Because in the end, the most important employee in the school district is the teacher, not the superintendent, not the principal. Of course, my duties are important, but I'm not the one that's in the classroom every single day with these beautiful kids that we have. So I think as long as we latch onto that and keep that, if that's our legacy as a team, our school districts will continue to do wonderful and amazing things, no matter what the challenge. So to all of you, this is literally my last moment. My office is ready for Mr. Mike Simic. I feel like you will embrace him, as very soon it'll be Harry Who. And you'll be on to other new challenges. And I will miss all of you because it's been ... What an amazing thing to come to work every day. And as hard as some days were, and you can imagine, recently there were some hard ones, but in other years, we had hard ones too. Not no exception. Every day, I couldn't wait to get to work to see what the next challenge would be. So Julia Wold, and Sharon Golden, and all of our Board members, a good school board is everything to a good superintendent. I know it's vice versa. A good school board has to have a superintendent that can get the job done. It goes together. And I am so blessed by having 14 wonderful people. So thank you all. When the meeting's over tonight, I'll be walking out the door, and that'll be it. I actually have no more meetings. I'll be done. And again, I walk ... I am putting some pictures up, some for Mike Simic to see when he walks into his new office, so I hope he'll find them funny. Just normal kind of pictures. Don't be thinking otherwise. But still, it'll be funny. So anyway, Godspeed to all of you. I'm very proud of all of you. This is all about team. So thank you. I guess I need to mention that I'm also married to one of the most beautiful, wonderful people in the world. So Adana, thank you for being here. So another unbelievable teacher herself, so ... And I can say I've got three kids who are teachers, so I feel like I know what their current challenges are too. Well, okay, I think on a little bit more sober note, with the extraordinary occurrence this year of events that happened with some of our Lake Forest High School students, we embarked on a new adventure with our community to see if there wasn't a way that we could expand help in our community. Lake Forest schools presently have seven social workers, six or seven social workers, four full-time school psychologists, PhD psychologists. When a student is having problems, we ... Our job starts the moment a child walks in the door, and our job ends the moment the child walks out the door. And what that means is that 90 percent of a child's time is not at school, 90 percent of a child's time in a calendar year. So with what happened, it just has to be ways that we can improve our own internal practices in our schools, Lake Forest High School, Deer Path Middle School, Elementary. But also, what about it in the community? So is there a way to network, partnership with our community? When distress is going on, what can a neighbor do? What can anybody do in our community? And so there's a new initiative going on, and Dr. Julie Cooley is here to report, Board Members. Just a brief update for you. A really, really important task force that's just gotten started, and I thought you really would like to hear what has happened. So as our liaison, Dr. Cooley, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good evening, Board Members. It is a little bit hard to change gears right now, but I guess we'll, you know, we'll forge forward as we have been in this initiative. So the Community Wellness Task Force, as I've been keeping you informed, was formed in early March. And right from the get-go, we had decided that a community assessment of all the mental health resources in our community were, was in order, because it's not just about the school, as Dr. Griffith said, or about any individual entity. It's about us all working together. So to that effort, we engaged a researcher from Johns Hopkins University. Dr. Darcy Hutchins came in and met with over 70 individuals across about 19 different organizations and entities from the community. And we sat together for a day, looking at a framework for how communities can network together and work together around any issue, and then particularly applied it to the mental health of our youth in the community. And we looked at some research on affluent committees, communities, and how that creates particular at-risk types of things. We looked at other communities and what they had done following tragedies like Palo Alto. And it was very, very helpful, I think, for the group to hear all of these things. There were people there from the city of Lake Forest, the village of Lake Bluff, Lake Forest Hospital was represented and shared some great information, all of our schools in the community, Lead, Croya, and a very, very large parent contingent. Lori Rose was among them, and I'm sure she would report to you or speak to any of you about the day, should you want more information. Another highlight of the day was Dr. Mark Reinicki, who has agreed to act as consultant to the task force. He's the head of the Psychology Division at Feingold School of Medicine at Northwestern, and a national expert on mental health, and particularly on depression among youth. So he was, get a very enlightening presentation, right up to the minute research on promising practices and promising assessments that most in the room had never heard of. So it was quite interesting and fascinating, and he's going to work with the task force. We're going to assimilate all the information that we gained that day. The groups worked all afternoon to come up with resources that currently exist and questions that they have despite those resources. And I actually, just as I sat down here tonight, I got the report from Dr. Hutchins, who put together all the information from that day. So we'll be providing that back to Dr. Reinicki and another small group from the task force who'll be helping to create some strategies going forward. We'll go back to the larger group in the fall and say, "School district, would you consider this strategy? Hospital, would you consider this strategy?" And so on and so forth. And as I mentioned, the hospital makes me think of really one interesting thing we all learned that day, because many of us, we didn't wait for the task force to come together to take action. The high school took many different actions that we had never done in previous years. Well, our mental health community, our physicians, also took actions that they had never done either before as well, including all the pediatricians agreed to do a quick assessment on every youth, every time they ... I'm not sure what age group, I say every youth, but when they come in for their school physicals. So actually, there were people in our office area who had been getting information from their doctors, saying, "When you come in, you know, please let us give this risk assessment to your youth." And so just a show that we, you know, if we all work together, how much more valuable that'll be for our youth. So there'll be more to come. I'll continue to give you updates into the fall, and if you need more information on any piece of this, you know, please let me know.
Board members, one last thing to add, and then questions while Dr. Cooley's with it, but we also are going to make another little internal shift. Rebecca Leifman, who's currently an assistant principal at the middle school, with the Board's approval, will be part-time, working part-time to lead the entire social-emotional initiative in our school district. Everything from the anti-bullying campaign to our new student leadership initiative with Web, Where Everyone Belongs, and so many other little activities having to do with students, relationship-building things. Be a liaison for us between the schools and the Board, mostly at the middle school, but also will be assigned K-8 with the elementary school. So we think this is internally, while on a three-quarter, or excuse me, two-thirds time basis devoted in her entire time to this, we think it's going to be a positive move also. And that's on the internal side as we get ready for next year. Bill, I think maybe you were getting ready to ask or question anyone else, Board Members, while Julie is here.
Thanks again for all the work you're doing in this area. I think it's great for the community. Obviously, one of the things that's going on in our community is they're building a big new hospital in that area. And I was just wondering, has there been any thought about building like mental health facilities into the new hospital, or maybe specifically focusing on teens or anything?
Well, at this point, I don't know about specific plans and the works for what they have on the table, but I do know that the hospital is very, very interested in Dr. Reinicki's work and his recommendations, and he is likely going to make specific recommendations to the hospital. I mean, he envisions the potential of a clinic of some sort, also just networking more with the police and fire and so forth, having ... They don't have a social worker that's available to the community 24/7, as an example. So they're actually worked out a way to have that in place right now. So I think that they seem very open to it. Tom McAfee actually welcomed our group on June 7, and seemed very, very open to accepting the recommendations and working with the recommendations. He has assigned a person to the task force, which I believe is, you know, works very closely with him, so he's going to be quite involved. Also, I'm glad that you mentioned that too regarding the hospital, because the hospital agreed to oversee, not oversee, but to sponsor a fund for anyone in the community. If some of these initiatives go forward, they could be quite costly to bring the right professionals into the community. So they agreed to take a part of their foundation and just earmark it to anything that came out of the task force, as well as give above and beyond that, which I know for a fact that they are just providing the services of Dr. Reinicki, is a quite generous contribution on the hospital's part.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooley. Who, by the way, Board Members, Julie's doing a great job helping us too, so ... And then what I would like to do is I would next like to introduce our new, this year co-presidents of the LFEA. Ladies, I'm going to ask you to stand, because we have Karen Dolan and Sue Christiansen. Let's welcome them to our school board meetings. Both teachers at Cherokee School. So ladies, thank you for being here. This will be my first and last time to welcome you, okay? And then I think what I'm going to do, because this is such a day of nostalgia today, driving ... I'm going to end up actually, on Thursday, I'm going to go tour all the schools one last time. But I think tonight, when you're on your way home, I want you to think of me just sitting here. I'm not going to leave. I may end up just staying. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, that was a fleeting thought. That concludes the Superintendent's Report, my last.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. That brings us to public participation. Is there a member of the audience that would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll go to reports, and there are no reports this evening. So we go to Board Committees. First, we have the Board of Education Committee, Leslie Fisher and Bill Anderson.
The Education Committee has not met since our last Board of Ed meeting, and we look forward to reconvening in the fall. Thank you.
The Board Operations Committee, Lori Rose and Rick Schuler.
The Operations Committee did meet a couple weeks ago at the Deer Path Middle School. We got a tour of the building this time. It's the second time we've met there. We went over things like tiles that need to be replaced that are in the budget, lighting outside that's been mostly replaced. Cornelius was there going over more tech items. Unfortunately, notepads again, but we got through it. The biggest item was the cube. We talked about, again, final plans, which it's getting much closer. We talked about how to bid it out, whether to go through a general contractor or a project manager. I think we're leaning towards the project manager as opposed to a GC for several reasons, but that still remains to be done. Looking at, I think we've got a range for the costs, but I won't get into the costs until we narrow it down so that I don't over-undershoot it. Those are the highlights. Anything else? Julia was there, of course, and that concludes the Operations Committee Report.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Board Finance Committee, Jeff Penderski and John Julian.
Jeff's not here tonight, so I'll read the report. The Finance Committee did meet on June 12. The meeting was held in the space which actually Rick was just referring to. It's the space which is undergoing planning for use as a new ... It's the space which is undergoing planning for use as a new learning center at the far east end of the Deer Path Middle School. Alan Albis presented an overview of the current plan for the new center, and we were all impressed with a great deal of space to work with, and we'll be very excited to hear about the progress of the plans as they evolve. The committee considered the renewal of the district's liability insurance for the 2012-2013 year. Alan explained that the District 67 participated in a liability insurance cooperative, along with 164 other school districts, and after discussion, the renewal of the cooperative's property and casualty policy was endorsed. Jennifer Hermes submitted a recommendation for a one-year renewal for the workers' compensation insurance. The district's agent had solicited three proposals for the 2012-2013 school year, and after discussion, renewal with the existing carrier was endorsed. Lifetouch National School Studios has been the district's student photography service for the past several years, and Alan reported that overall, the staff and parents have been very pleased with the services that were provided. And the committee, based upon the recommendation, endorsed a one-year extension of the current photography contract. And finally, regarding the district's instant alert messaging service, Alan reported that the current provider, Honeywell Building Solutions District, would offer a renewal rate of $2.20 per student, which represents no change from last year's rate. The committee endorsed a one-year contract extension based upon that. The Finance Committee's next meeting has not yet been scheduled, and that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much, John. This brings us to district committees, in which board members act as liaisons. The North Suburban Special Education District, Jeff Penderzki is absent tonight. The Illinois Association of School Boards, and Ed Redd, Bill Anderson.
There is no report this month.
Thank you, Bill. Professional Development, Rick Schuler.
No report this month.
Thank you, Rick. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee is Lori Rose, and she is absent. And I have the Spirit of 67 Foundation, and we did not meet this month. We will meet again beginning in September. Is there any other committee that met that a board member would like to report about? Seeing none, this brings us to the recommendations portion, recommendations portion of our agenda. And board members, what I would like to do is have a motion to amend the agenda, to move the approval of the Champions After-School Program to be the first item. May I, are there any questions about that?
Yes, I move that we move the Champions proposal to the first item, so that these gentlemen don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we need to be kind to the Secret Service.
Yes. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, that brings us to the approval of the Champions After-School Program. Dr. Griffith?
Board members, thank you. Alan Albis will provide an overview for us of our after-school program that we have. Alan, thank you.
For many years, the district has had an arrangement with the After-School Club to provide after-school daycare, or after-school supervision, to students of working parents. It's estimated that approximately 54 children utilize the service. The arrangement generates approximately $7,500 a year to the school district in miscellaneous revenue. Over this past year, staff began identifying other providers of after-school care, and recently, Dr. Michelle Shin and Dr. Ingrid Wymer met with representatives from two other companies. The first was Champions After-School Program, and the second was Right at School. Both companies provide a more enhanced program than that of the After-School Club, and of the two, Champions was considered to be the best fit with current needs. So again, to summarize, After-School Club really focuses on after-school daycare, so it's really supervised after-school playtime. Champions and Right at School are more curriculum enrichment, and they try to coordinate more with what the district focuses on as well. So in doing the interviews, they felt that both companies, for a comparable cost, offer enhanced benefits to the district. And then of the two, Champions was felt to be the best fit for our district. So we're recommending for the 12-13 school year that we approve a contract with KU Champions. The contract was put at your places tonight, and that was my fault. I, in talking with Mr. Bryant before, I'd said our board packets go out on Thursday afternoons, didn't realize Eileen was leaving on vacation. They went out, we missed it by hours. It went out earlier. But the approval of the contract is still subject to attorney review. So if there's any concerns, as you skim through it, that you see, or any that we identify, we'll have the opportunity to work those out.
And board members, I talked with Alan about this, and I also talked with our principals. So they were actually pretty enthusiastic about this recommendation, too. So I think it's, represents a nice upgrade of our current after-school program.
This is at which school?
It's actually at two, at Everett and at Cherokee, and then the kids at Sheridan are shuttled over to Cherokee.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, board members?
Yes, and maybe, I'm trying to read through this, and I just asked Bill, as an aside, the cost difference for families paying in?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bryant to address that.
As opposed to the previous after-school program?
Can you guys hear me okay? Dr. President, okay. The cost difference is actually going to be a dollar less per day. The previous provider was at 1850 a day, and ours came in at 1750. We took a look at what the current provider was charging, and took a look at some of the other rates of districts, also in Lake County, and we felt that 1750 would be appropriate, which is a dollar less than what the parents were paying last year.
And does a family pay the same if they have one child or three children in the program?
We do offer multi-child discounts, not only with our registration fees, but also with the weekly rates. And we also offer a 10% discount to all District 67 employees.
Any other questions, board members?
I think I know the answer to this, but the rent paid to our district? I mean, I don't know if that's, Alan, you want to address that?
Speaking with Alan, we wanted to approach District 67 with a 6% revenue share. It's on the high end of what we typically revenue share with districts in Lake County and across Illinois. Just looking at some basic projected enrollment numbers, we're looking at around $12,000 a year back to the district, which would be significantly higher than the funding that was coming back in years past.
Good. Alan, you had said we were around seven?
$7,500 a year.
I know you're all, we're all taking a look at the latest document. Are we, any further questions? You good? Okay. Are you guys good down there, Leslie and Bill? All right. May I have a motion to approve the Champions After-School Program?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk? Oh, any, any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion's approved. That brings us back to our regular agenda, to the approval of the LFEA board contract. Dr. Griffith?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for coming. Okay, board members, I'm going to turn to Jennifer Hermes, who will give you a brief overview of what is the culmination of a great deal of work this spring, and that went into crafting a new contract with the, our Lake Forest Education Association teachers in District 67. Very active in assisting the board and leading the board was Vice President John Julian and Board Member Leslie Fisher. And then we also have the advantage of having our new presidents here, so maybe at the conclusion, Karen and/or Sue, if you'd like to make a comment about that, about the contract and just, you know, about teachers out in the, you know, in the workforce about this, just, I think that'd be really nice, too. So thank you for, if you're willing to do that. So I, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn to Jennifer Hermes. And then, please, John and Leslie, just jump in wherever you feel it would be good to do, too, okay?
I am pleased to announce that on May 30th, a final negotiation session was held with LFEA, which is the Lake Forest Education Association. LFEA represents over 200 of our teachers and teaching assistants. In total, 21 items were reviewed, discussed, and tentatively agreed to, including a comprehensive financial package. Items related to operational efficiency, professional development, minor working conditions, and some legal compliance issues, such as evaluations. So things that have changed since the last contract was negotiated. We have a three-year tentative agreement. Financially, the base salary increases on the teacher's salary schedule were 1.1%, 1.35%, and 1.35% for the next three years. The total compensation packages, including salary and projected benefits, were 3.74%, 4.35%, and 4.32%. I'm also pleased to announce that LFEA ratified the contract last week with a very high, extremely high, maybe Sue or Karen will talk about that, approval rating. And the written contract is in the final stages of review, and with approval tonight, once that's completed, will be posted online.
Okay, board members, we did discuss this in executive session, and we have had several executive sessions over the past two months regarding the contract. So are there any further questions, board members, or? Okay, seeing no further questions, may?
I thought maybe if Leslie...
Oh, okay, yes. Our LFEA Board Presidents?
Karen Dolan, Karen, thank you.
Thank you, and we want to, Sue and I would like to thank the board for your collaborative manner that you came to the table, and we feel that it was a really good way. We communicated, you were able to communicate with us. Our staff was very happy with the contract, and everyone is very pleased to start the new school year with this behind us, and knowing that we did this in a collaborative, in a very collective way. So Sue and I are very appreciative for you as a board and as presidents, and of course, Dr. Griffith, for everything you do for us as teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to highlight, too, that, you know, Leslie and, Leslie Fisher and John Julian served as representatives from the board, but also, the, could you highlight the administrators who were on the, it was yourself and Jennifer?
Right.
Hermes and Andy Hendrickson, correct?
And Joe Millen.
Oh, and Joe Millen.
Andy, Joe, Jennifer, and myself, and I, sort of our lead, our, I don't want to say lead dog, but our lead person on this was Jennifer Hermes. And Andy and Joe jumped in as a first-time experience, but then did an amazing job of working with our administrative staff, including principals, over things that would be helpful, particularly when it came to trying to understand the new regulations and statutes on teacher evaluation. So really made solid contributions, and I think from the administrative side of this, Jennifer Hermes just did an amazing job.
And thank you, too, to all the teachers who served voluntarily, gave their time to negotiate. So are there any further questions or comments, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the LFEA board contract? So moved. Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk, substitute?
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Fisher?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Julia, can I, I would like to say something now.
Yes.
Now that I know the vote has gone the right way. I just want to say that we have an outstanding staff in the community that's eager and willing to support the best possible educational opportunities for our students, and I certainly believe that this settlement is a win-win for all. It is fiscally responsible and keeps our teacher salaries and benefits competitive with other top-performing school districts. The teachers should be credited with engaging in negotiations with integrity, dedication, and a willingness to listen to all points of view. I personally never felt that any members of the teachers' team put individual interests ahead of the goal to reach an overall equitable agreement and get back to the work of educating our children. Leslie and I and the rest of the board's negotiation team would like to thank them for their hard work and congratulate them on what we believe will be an excellent agreement for the next three years. So thank you very much for all of your work and all the people on your team, and it really was oddly enough to say, was a very pleasant experience. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
I think that means, John, we'll offer to do it again in three years.
I'm thinking not. I'll make the motion.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the approval of the IASB Board Policies' second reading. So these are the policies that we discussed last month.
Yes, board members, nothing has changed, no further suggested changes. This had been fully vetted by our Policy Committee. We had our attorney, I believe the committee met two, at least two, maybe three times to review. We did have legal counsel to assist. This would be second and final reading for the new policy on treatment of misconduct of, of, policy and procedure, policy on treatment of misconduct of district employee, require cooperation with investigations, and our new social media and electronic communication policy. I would recommend these be approved by the board per the Policy Committee.
So this would, approval of the second and final reading would make them part of our policy?
It makes these policies effective tomorrow.
Thank you. Any just questions?
All three policies.
Those three policies.
These three policies would become effective in our district tomorrow.
Any further questions or discussion? May I have a motion to approve the three policies on second reading?
I move we approve all three policies.
Second?
Second.
Is this roll call? Because it's policy. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, the motion carries. This brings us to the approval of the IASB Board Policy Updates. This is the first reading. Dr. Griffith?
Board members, what I'd like to suggest, I actually like to make a suggestion here that's a little different than what you have. So the Illinois School Board Association provides a policy service, this is a reminder to everyone, to school districts across the state of Illinois who participate in the policy service. So your policy manual is managed, vetted, reviewed, studied, evaluated by a group of attorneys who work for the Illinois School Board Association. Based on statutory changes, the legislature meets every year, there's also veto sessions, there are decisions of court on wide variety of topics. There are Attorney General rulings, there are federal courts and federal legislative changes that periodically affect all of our policies. And so what IASB does is periodically, two or three times during the year, they will send out an update, they call it a press update, to just bring certain policies out of many into compliance. Now, the policies that I, that I'm recommending for first reading are coming straight from the School Board Association. I did meet with, these particular policies with our school district attorney. In virtually every single case, there, these are small footnote legislate, legislation alignment, very, very modest, these are very small changes. It just basically helps keep your... very, very modest, these are very small changes, it just basically helps keep your policy manual up to date. There's only a couple of new policies that are mandatory, like I would say, for example, head concussions. So what is the board's policy when, in athletics in particular, not so much elementary district, but certainly high school, a little bit, can happen in middle school, but what is, what is our procedure and policy on it? So there's a new statute addressing that, it's a national issue, and the School Board Association has a policy for you. Just a couple of new policies, but totally aligned with what new state laws there are. So I would suggest that, and this is a common practice that we've had, that you waive first reading and, and you've had a chance to, you know, ha, look at the policies and have them. They also can be reviewed at any time in the future, any one of these. But go ahead, and you can accelerate the process by waiving first reading and approving them on second reading. You can do that all in one motion, and then that effectively implements these policies. We will contact, I take that back, someone will contact the School Board Association that these policies are ready for inclusion into our policy manuals. The electronic version will be sent to us, that'll get posted online with our, on our website as we always do. And of course, board members, you'll have access to the electronic version also. So again, very small changes, they, they, that, that you had, not, nothing really very material in, in this entire press release.
Comments or questions?
Thank you, thank you for your comments. I guess I'm just concerned, some of the policies here I haven't really seen before. And in addition, some of them are marked up, where there's, you know, the policy and then someone's written line through different parts of it and everything. So it seemed like there's been some discussion that we haven't necessarily gotten to participate in. So I guess I'm a little bit uncomfortable just skipping through it without having...
Yeah, those, the redlining is coming from the, the School Board Association.
Any other, I had a question on, on a particular policy. There was one about the asthma, the... I think it was the asthma inhalers. And basically, the comment was that if you adopt that policy, do we currently provide, do we have asthma inhalers available in our schools?
Actually, I'd like to look at the policy again, but I think that it is related to the EpiPens, because that is the new policy where now we do have EpiPens in the building, but they're all assigned to a student. They come from home with the student, you know, prescribed by their doctors. What, there is a policy that says that a school nurse could get a prescription that's not assigned to a specific individual, that they could use for someone who is not already known to have an allergy. So it, you know, likely we do have students in the environment that we are, it is unknown to us that they would even need an EpiPen, and so that's the point of that policy. Actually, one of our local families was actually instrumental in, in some of that coming forward. We still need to have some discussion. I believe that the policy has a caveat, that if you are unable to get a prescription, there's no, there's kind of a hold harmless as part of that as well. So if you don't have them, can't get them, you're not required to get them. Or if you use them, there's a hold harmless in, in that as well. So we're still working through that as a, as a organization.
I did talk with our head nurse about it. In all cases, our nurses get approval from the families to use an EpiPen. It's an extremely rare circumstance where a student would need one who doesn't already have approval for it. And our nurses are supportive of this policy change. It's also now statutory.
Logistics is the only thing that we'd have to work through. We've actually identified a local physician who's quite willing to help us out.
My concern was that I think there was an aside that said if you adopt this policy and then don't have the EpiPens available, you're in violation of the policy.
I, I think the reverse is true. I think they were saying that if you're not able to, you would not be in violation.
You would not be, okay.
They would not be holding you accountable for that.
Okay, okay. I would rather set that one aside for further clarification.
Why don't we just hold back all of them, and you can do them in July? This would be, approve them on first reading, look them through. If you have further questions, you can contact Mike or Eileen, and then they will route the question to either Jennifer, Alan, or Julie, or Andy, so.
Okay, let's do that. I think that's a good recommendation.
All right, so stay, then the recommendation would be to adopt Policy Press Update 78 and 79, 77 and 78 on first reading. This, this does not mean you're adopting these policies, it means that you're now engaged in study, and you'll come back for a final reading.
Okay, any further discussion? No. All right, may I have a motion to approve the IASB Board Policy Updates on first reading?
So moved.
Second?
The second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose? Absent, Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, motion carries. This brings us to the approval of the Michigan State University Contract for Mandarin Teacher. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, board members, I, I know you've been through this before, so this is just the renewal of our contract with MSU for the teachers that we have through the MSU program. And then the following recommendation is for housing for them. It's all ready to go. I don't know if Andy has anything he'd like to add to this. He's, Andy's done a wonderful job of preparing these contracts for us. Andy?
Yeah, I would say the new, the new piece to this is that we are moving our Mandarin teachers to, to new housing places. Chong Jan was married, her husband came back from China. Three of them were living together, and now two of them will be housed together. We're looking for, we found a two-bedroom, less money. As you know, we are subsidizing, to a small extent, the housing for our MSU teachers, because they come from East Lansing, and prices are a little bit less there. Our subsidy is going down because we found some very good places. And part of that is that our Mandarin teachers are learning to drive, and they're becoming more mobile, which is a great sign, because we want them to become career teachers here in, in Lake Forest, and that, that's a sign that they want to do that, to, to learn how to drive, get cars, and stay in, stay in the United States, stay in Lake Forest. So I'm excited to present the contracts with you, because I think it, it shows the stability that we're hoping for is, is, is going to continue.
Any questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the MSU Contract for Mandarin Teachers?
I move we approve the contract.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. That brings us, we've already approved the Champions After School Program, and then this brings us to the approval of the Sheridan School Lighting Proposal. Oh, excuse me, the approval of the lease for the MSU Mandarin Teachers.
Board members, you, you've had it, we sent to you electronically the, one of the leases, but at your place tonight is a second lease that has been updated. We find these to be reasonable rates in our community for our teachers. Andy can give you any specifics if you have questions, but this is a continuation of the practice that we've had with our teachers, who can come into our community to teach Mandarin, a, a subject that very, very few people can teach. So this is a, pretty hard to find teachers who can do this, and we're very lucky to have probably the best Mandarin teachers in the state, top to bottom in our schools.
Any board questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the lease for the MSU Mandarin Teachers? So moved. Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now we get to the approval of the Sheridan School Lighting Proposal.
Yes, board members, I'm going to go to Alan to just update this for you, so Alan, thank you.
We're going to set you table this, and we will bring it back in July. In reviewing it, I saw what I thought might be an inconsistency in data between the memo and an earlier email. I tried to contact Carol White prior to the meeting to clarify it, and I was unable to reach her. It's about a one-week project, so I think holding off until July, there will be no harm in that. And it gives us a chance to make sure our data is accurate.
Thank you. May I have a motion to, to table the approval of the Sheridan School Lighting Proposal?
I move we table the proposal. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Do we, do we need a roll call vote for this? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda, consensus agenda items. We have the approval of the school treasurer appointment, the approval of student photography contract renewal, the approval of workers' compensation insurance policy renewal, the adoption of the resolution for prevailing wage, the adoption of the resolution for budget transfers, the approval of the Honeywell Instant Alert renewal, and the approval of the CLIC Property Casualty Insurance Policy Renewal. We have the approval of minutes of a regular meeting, an executive session, and a public hearing all held on May 22nd, 2012. We have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement from May 2012. May disbursements and procurement card purchases totaling $1,037,686.64, and may payrolls totaling $1,584,220.24, and the May 2012 financial report. We also have the approval of human resources items, including the approval of leave requests, new staff retirements, and status changes. We have the record of closed meetings. With regards to the record of closed meetings, there are no audio recordings being disposed of. I asked the question, Dr. Griffith, about the, there's a few more items included in the consent agenda this evening, and I just would like a clarification of the decision to include those in the consent agenda as opposed to those which were called out under recommendations.
Oh, sure. Well, these are standard practice resolutions that are common to this time of the year. No change in service or service provider, such as the casualty insurance policy, where there was an increase of, say, a 3% increase, that was reviewed and vetted by our, just our board finance committee. But because these policies are, these recommendations in consent agenda are not any change from past practice, they seem to be suitable for the consensus agenda, although, of course, we're ready to discuss any of them individually.
Okay, is there any item that a board member would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next, we have a number of FOIA requests. First one from Gregory E. Moy with an email address. The second from Lisa Black of the Chicago Tribune. Then one from Janice Schnobrick of Lake Bluff, from Michael Beecham of Lake Forest, and from Nancy Thorne in Lake Bluff. Our next board meeting, for all of us except for Dr. Griffith, will be held Tuesday, July 24th, at the Harry Griffith Administrative Center here in West Campus. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.